All right, welcome. We're going to go ahead and reconvene open session at 5:44. We have actions taken in closed session will be read by our clerk, trustee Milchker.
Yes, on a seven to zero vote, the board voted to rescind the board's decision to non-renew approbationary faculty members contract and in lieu, accept the faculty members resignation.
And that was the only action that we took?
Perfect.
That is, we read out.
Okay. We'll go ahead and I'll lead the invocation. If you can then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by trustee Wright. So, all too often in the last month since our last meeting, there have been many reminders of the frailty of life. And once again, we were reminded yesterday by the deadly tornadoes in the Midwest. So we'd just like to take a moment of silence for all such reminders.
Let's face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have one request for public comments. Paula Jacobs.
As you can see, we're back and we're here to support our proposal for negotiations and the negotiations process. We're also here as a reminder that people are our most important institutional resource. All our employees are important, our excellent support staff, our police officers, and our administrative staff. But the faculty is at the heart of our colleges. Students come to our colleges to be educated and it is the faculty that provides that opportunity for them. We need to continue to attract and employ excellent faculty. In order to do that, we need adequate compensation for all faculty and more equitable working conditions for our part-time faculty. We look forward to a productive negotiations process and an excellent contract. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have recognitions. And we have resolutions. Do you want me to go down now?
First, our wonderful student trustee, David Robinson, our 2013-2014 student trustee. I guess I'll start reading now, okay? Speed things along. Whereas David Robinson served as the elected student member of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees for the 2013-2014 academic year, representing more than 40,000 students each semester from Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology and Education Park. And whereas David Robinson served on the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force with me, representing the interests of more than 300,000 students in Orange County. And whereas David Robinson took a keen interest in the California Bar's Community College Pathway to Law School, adult education, student veterans, and student financial aid legislation, and strongly advocated for a district-wide smoke-free policy, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate David Robinson for his outstanding service as a student trustee for the 2013-2014 academic year, and wish him well in his educational and career endeavors. We'll all miss you. Thank you.
You need a roll call?
Okay, now we need a roll call for vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
I'd just like to thank everybody, thank the board, the president of IVC and president of Saddleback, and all the support staff, as well as the students and the faculty and staff. I really appreciate the opportunity. It was a pleasure and an honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And this is in honor of Classified School Employees Week, and we all really need our classified employees, as well as our faculty. Whereas classified school employees provide valuable services, skills, and support to students, faculty, administrators, and the staff of the South Orange County Community College District. Whereas classified school employees contribute significantly to the establishment and promotion of a positive and supportive instructional and learning environment to facilitate student success at Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology and Education Park. Whereas classified school employees play an important and vital role in providing for the health, welfare, and safety of the South Orange County Community College District and staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby recognize, honor, and appreciate the many contributions of the classified employees to quality education in California and in our district, and declare the week of May 18th to 24th, 2014, as Classified School Employee Week. And now we need to have a roll call vote. Thank you.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Robinson.
Aye.
They don't want to say anything?
No.
Okay. I heard you speak at the Student Success Summit. Mic's out. I haven't been to speak there. Thank you. Okay, now, now we're going to have some resolutions for our wonderful faculty at our colleges. First, Irvine Valley College. Virginia Shank is the Irvine Valley College Professor of the Year. Is she here?
Yeah, she's right there. Oh, there she is. Sorry, didn't see you. Whereas Virginia Shank, a faculty member at Irvine Valley College since 2012, is recognized as the Professor of the Year for her contributions to the college and her students. And whereas Virginia Shank first fell in love with teaching while working as a tutor in college, and has gone above and beyond her teaching duties to install a small free library and produce publications and reading with her students. And whereas Virginia Shank is noted for her high expectations, her willingness to help, and her choice of useful reading which encouraged all of her students to think critically and ask questions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Virginia Shank as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Professor of the Year. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Robinson.
Aye.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of the so supportive people out here. I mean, I moved from New York two years ago and never saw this happening so quickly. And I don't think it would have happened if not for all of the people who have helped me be the best teacher I can be. So thank you, especially to my department members, to the people in the Faculty Association, and the people who support us by supporting our schools. So thank you. Thank you.
And next, Mercedes Julian, the Irvine Valley College Part-Time Professor of the Year. Whereas Mercedes Julian, a member of the Irvine Valley College School of Humanity and Language Teaching Staff since 1984, is recognized as the Part-Time Professor of the Year for her continuing effort to educate and edify her students. And whereas Mercedes Julian primarily has taught Spanish 10 and 11, and said she has been privileged to experience the growth of the colleges over the past 30 years. And whereas Mercedes Julian fills her class with discussions and critical thinking, and imbues her class with not only Spanish language, but many aspects of Hispanic culture, focusing on two hallmarks, respect and laughter. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Mercedes Julian as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Part-Time Professor of the Year. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Thank you for the support. It's a privilege and an honor to work at IVC. IVC rocks, and the best students in the world, and to be a part of the South Orange County Community College District. I've loved it. I didn't have gray hair when I started, and now you see. But, thank you. Gracias.
Gracias. Is this right? Right. Okay, now, make sure of the right number now. Okay, now my friend, Dr. Alana Rosenberg, who...
There's another one.
No, one more. One more? Joanna Shun. Joanna Shun.
I'm sorry. I misplaced Joanna G. Shun, who's the Irvine Valley College Emeritus Professor of the Year.
Whereas Joanna G. Shun, a longtime instructor at the Irvine Valley College Emeritus Institute, is recognized as Outstanding Emeritus Professor of the Year for her excellence in teaching Tai Chi. And whereas Joanne G. Shun is a national champion and gold medalist, who began studying in 1975, and has been described as someone with special and rare talent for both leading, leadership, and teaching. And whereas Joanna G. Shun committed her life to the knowledge, to the art and the discipline of Tai Chi, which is clearly evidenced in her skill, knowledge, and desire to share them as she teaches with humor and sensitivity, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Joanna G. Shun as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Emeritus Teacher of the Year. Now we have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Robinson.
Aye.
I want to say thank you especially to the Emeritus Institute staff and Dr. Greiner, who've supported all the background in terms of getting everything available for me to be able to focus on teaching the classes. And in particular, I'd like to thank the students who, vote of confidence, nominated me for this prestigious award. Thank you.
Now, the teachers of the year for Saddleback College. Now it's time for my friend, Dr. Alana Rosenberg. She's a Saddleback College Professor of the Year. Whereas Dr. Alana Rosenberg, an economics instructor at Saddleback College since 1990, who described your students as a dedicated teacher and inspiring, who described by her students, as a dedicated teacher and inspiring mentor, was named Saddleback College's Professor of the Year. And whereas Dr. Alana Rosenberg is called a superhero by her students for sharing the Saddleback College Honors Program, and for the time and energy she puts into making the program a success, in addition to her already busy teaching schedule. And whereas Dr. Alana Rosenberg truly celebrates her accomplishments of her students, giving them much deserved praise, and sharing the news with her colleagues, and most notably, when her students have been accepted to the universities of their choice, thanks in no small part to her consistent encouragement. And be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Dr. Alana Rosenberg for her outstanding dedication to her students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's Professor of the Year. Now, 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 we need a roll call vote again. Thank you.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Robinson.
Aye.
I want to thank everybody here and the people who are not here, who are in, the faculty and the students, who make this such a wonderful place to work. I love my job. I love working with Alexis. I love working with the honors faculty like Luke and Mario and Claire, and it makes it really easy, really easy to want to be here and to want to do my best. Thank you.
Okay, the next, the next is Fariba Vandendust, Saddleback College Associate Professor of Whereas Fariba Vandendust, a chemistry instructor at Saddleback College, was named Saddleback College's Associate Professor of the Year. And whereas Fariba Vandendust has taught Saddleback College students with distinction since 2007, and is known for her caring and courteous demeanor. Whereas Fariba Vandendust, students admire her for the extra time she takes to answer their questions, often staying well after class to provide help for her students when they need it. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Fariba Vandendust for her outstanding dedication to her students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's Associate Professor of the Year. And we need a roll call vote now, please.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Robinson.
Aye.
First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody. I started here under Dr. Wright, when he was the dean at the Math and Science Department, and now under Dr. McDonald. And I've had nothing but an outstanding support from both of these gentlemen and the entire department. So for that, I thank you. And the students here are great. Their enthusiasm and their motivation is wonderful. So it's been an honor and a pleasure to teach over here. Thank you.
She is not. She had an illness in the family.
Okay, I'll read it anyway. Everybody I know that has ever taken Colette's class says she's the most fabulous teacher they've ever had. Anyway, her name is Colette Chetopediai, and she's Saddleback College's Emeritus Professor of the Year, and well-loved by the entire Emeritus, all the Emeritus students. But anyway, whereas Colette Chetopediai, an art history instructor at Saddleback College, was named Saddleback College's Emeritus Professor of the Year. And whereas Colette Chetopediai has created a world-class art history lecture program that surprises and delights students every semester, leading to well-attended classes and outstanding reviews that rave about her ability to raise the bar and challenge students with innovative and exciting materials. And whereas Chetopediai has served as the Emeritus Institute Department Chair, assigned to curriculum development for six years, steering many art history and liberal arts course proposals through the rigorous approval process and strengthening the Emeritus Institute's course offerings. And be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Colette Chetopediai for her outstanding dedication to her students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's Emeritus Professor of the Year. And can you read the roll call, please?
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Bird.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Thank you on behalf of Colette.
Okay, so while you're up there, you have a commendation for Lariat Advisor, Amara Aguilar.
Yes, I'm very, and I don't think, and then some. Dean of Kevin O'Connor, he's not here. Vice President Kathy Williams is going to come up and help us and give out all the certificates. Mr. President, members of the board, and guests, we're very excited today to congratulate our staff of the Lariat, Saddleback, and IVC's student newspaper, who won 11 awards at the statewide Journalism Association of Community Colleges Conference on April 5th in Burbank. The newspaper was honorably mentioned among the top community college student newspapers in California, in more than five competitive categories at the conference, which had more than 545 students from over 43 California community colleges in attendance. First, we're very proud and congratulations to another fine faculty member, Amara Aguilar. She's our faculty advisor for the Lariat. She was named the Journalism Educator of the Year by the California Journalism Education Coalition. In addition, we have several students that are with us here today on the Lariat who captured various awards. When I call your name, if you could please come up, and if we could please hold applause until the very end. First is Natalie Lozano. She won the Meritorious Award, Instagram. Shirley Smith won the Meritorious Award for Video Journalism. Danny Pestalaci won the Meritorious Award for Video Journalism. Matt Corkhill, second place, sports photo, and third place for the team feature. Kristen Wilcox, third place for team feature, and honorable mention for broadcast news writing. Allison Gale, honorable mention, sports writing, Meritorious Award, Video Journalism. Anna Bol Santos, she won first place, Inside Page Layout, Broad Sheet, and also an honorable mention for the editorial cartoon. Angie Pineta, first place for editorial writing. And Kaylee Johnston, second place, photo illustration. Congratulations to our wonderful Lariat staff.
Okay, next, we have board reports. We'll start with trustee Jay.
One thing I want to mention.
Microphone, please. Trustee Jay, microphone, please.
Light, louder. Very in the agenda where we congratulate and give commendations to people who have done a wonderful job here at Saddleback and at IVC, and of course, at ATEP, which is still a burning. But anyway, it occurs to me that we praise individuals who have shown themselves to be outstanding, but I would like to say there's 274 full-time faculty at the two campuses, and there are several hundred part-time faculty, and we don't want to forget them, even though we congratulate individuals in various areas. But the many, many people who contribute and make this a great institution, and IVC a great institution, we don't want that to stop. So those awards are wonderful. Keep them coming.
All right, thank you. Trustee Jamal.
So I had an opportunity to attend on Friday the Student Success Summit, or a portion of it, at Irvine Valley College at IVC. I attended the lunch. I thought it was a very healthy discussion. I think that you had a number of faculty there who were thinking of new ways to help this current generation of students learn. And I think there were some really fresh ideas that were espoused, and I think the interaction between the faculty. I sat in on one small group session, and I thought it was very healthy, and I was very encouraged by what I saw on Friday. So I hope that those kinds of summits continue. One thing that's on my mind, folks caught the LA Times article about a week ago about UC admissions, and six out of the nine UC campuses, I think our admission rates are lower, even though applications are higher. The admission rates at Berkeley and UCLA are now under 20%. And it struck me, on the one hand, because it's close to home for me personally right now, as my daughter is a junior in high school, looking at options, that there is immense competition for higher education. And, you know, what you call the so-called elite universities, it's even more intense. Admission rates at some schools below 10%. Again, healthy that applications are on the rise. The issue of admitting a higher number of non-California residents is striking some debate, because you're seeing that happen in the UC system, where an increased number of non-California residents are getting admitted. Now, the system itself, the UC system, says it's not at the expense of California residents, and let's hope that's the case. But it also reminded me how the importance of this institution, and that having an affordable, quality education at our community colleges. And it's the reason why California has grown and succeeded, is because we have a system here of higher education that's worked. And let's just hope that it's a positive thing that admissions are on the rise at UC. But on the other hand, let's make sure that, you know, the California residents that need good, affordable education continue to get it. Thank you.
Trustee Milchker.
Hi. Well, first of all, I really enjoyed reading out those resolutions, because as I mentioned before, we could have the most wonderful trustees in the world, but unless we have the best faculty in the world, we wouldn't be giving the best education to our students. So the most important thing is that we have great teachers, and the trustees encourage them, and make sure that the morale is high, and make sure that everyone is teaching and learning. And as we can see from the resolutions, that is going on at our colleges, and I'm very, very proud of that. And I'm going to mention a few of the things I attended this month. I attended the Emeritus Institute Advisory Committee at Saddleback College. I spoke on Laguna Woods TV. They interviewed me about the Emeritus Institute, and if you'd like to see it, just check it out on YouTube. I think it's kind of fun to watch. Then I went to the Emeritus Institute Art Show, which was at Saddleback College on the second floor of the Learning Resource Center, and there's some incredibly beautiful artwork done by some of our Emeritus Institute students. I attended the Student Success Summit. That was all day Friday, that trustee Jamal was at, too. I attended it all day, but I missed the lunch meeting, and he attended the lunch meeting. So we were like ships that passed in the night. We didn't see each other. But it was a very valuable meeting, and if you'd like to find out some of the presentations that were given there, you could check it out on www.saddleback.edu backslash faculty slash resources backslash student dash success dash summit. And if you missed any of that, email me, and I'll email it back to you. And if you go to that website, you'll see the PowerPoint presentations of the first speaker, and many of the handouts. And there were a lot of great ideas as how we can make our students' success, make our students and help our students succeed, and help them graduate from Saddleback College. We do a fabulous job already, but this helps give us even more tips to that. I attended the Saddleback College Gala at the Marriott Cliffs Hotel. Two fabulous shows, one at Saddleback College and one at Irvine Valley College. Oh, I'm supposed to mention my friend, Joe Snyder, is starting a fundraiser, raising funds for our veterans, and he's having an art contest. And at the art contest, they're going to have the award ceremony on August the 5th. I went to the newly-tenured faculty meeting, right before this meeting, and it... meeting right before this meeting, and on Wednesday, it’s going to be at Irvine Valley College after our board forum with as many faculties would like to come or staff would like to come. And I attended the Orange County Social Entrepreneurship Kickoff, and the final competition showcase will be at Irvine Valley College on May 10. And this coming month, next month, will be the two commencements, so there’ll be lots more going on, and I’m looking forward to that. That’s kind of the culmination of all of our hard work as trustees and as faculty members and as classified staff members. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Thank you. Well, this is a very special time of year, as we’ve seen tonight, recognizing and honoring our faculty and our classified staff, and of course, our students coming up with graduation and scholarship award ceremonies. And it’s a busy, busy month, but it’s a fun, fun month, and I’m looking forward to it very much. I did attend the gala, and I was very pleased to be able to solicit about 10 different items to be donated to the silent auction. It was an incredible success. I think the best one we’ve had. I’m looking forward to doing the same and hoping that Irvine Valleys will be as successful. I think, I believe the total, and you can correct me, President Burnett, if I’m wrong, is 80,000 net. Net, right. Right, but we’re not finished, because we’re still auctioning off a two-year, brand-new car lease. So if anybody wants a ticket, and that will be decided at the KSVR Birthday Bash on the 25th, where they will pull one of the tickets that you’re going to buy out of a hat, and then you’ll get a free lease on an Audi for two years. So in any event, it was a terrific event. And again, I’m just looking forward to all of the events in May and honoring our great colleges. Thank you.
All right. I’ll just reiterate what my fellow trustees have said. This is an exciting time for recognizing our faculty and an exciting time coming up where we will recognize the work they have done and the product of the students that have worked hard to finish out and finish strong is what I will recommend they do. Now is not the time to slack.
No.
Okay. Trustee Wright.
I attended a number of events also this last month. I also want to thank those outstanding faculty, all those professors of full-time, part-time, and emeritus. They’re wonderful teachers. I happen to know several of them very well and personally know them, and they’re outstanding faculty members, so I congratulate them. I attended the Orange County School Board Association Meeting, April 2nd. I learned an awful lot at that meeting about K-12. They had a special guest there. Her name was Sue Burr from the State Department of Education, and she talked a little bit about the local control funding. She talked about the Common Core. It was sort of interesting. You may have read about it in the newspaper, the Common Core as being implemented into the schools. We had protesters out front of that meeting. They were protesting the Common Core. Talked about some budget issues. I guess the budget looks very good. There may be some extra money towards the end of this year. I attended also the gala. It was a wonderful event. Brought back a lot of memories. We used to meet at the Laguna Cliffs Marriott Resort years ago. We had our scholarship awards, so it was nice to go back there. I attended the Earth Day Vender Event here at Saddleback College. Walked around, had a good, they had a number of interesting displays and so forth. That was very well. Also, the new tenured faculty member. It was a reception here at Saddleback College, and there’s one coming up for the ones at IVC on Wednesday. Also, I wanted to just, there’s a part of a board agenda item where we’re losing some outstanding people, particularly in the Division of Math, Science, Engineering, who are retiring. Professor, Dr. Peter Brevella and Professor Michael Patricic. One of them has been here for 33 years, another one has been here for 26 years. That’s 59 years of teaching experience that walk out the door when they retire. So that’s one of our agenda items this evening. But again, I’m looking forward to the month of May and for all these outstanding events.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I’ve just got a few items that I thought I would mention. I also want to reiterate my congratulations to all those folks tonight that received resolutions. All of you are very deserving. And special thanks to my boardmate here, David Robinson, on doing just an outstanding job in representing the students this year. I also attended the tenure reception for folks out here outside of McKinney Theater tonight, and congratulations to all our new tenured faculty members. And finally, I will be attending the CCLC Conference, which is in Newport this weekend. And so I’ll bring back whatever information from there that I can share with my fellow trustees. Thank you.
Student Trustee Robinson.
I just wanted to thank again the trustees, the chancellor, district administration and staff, as well as the college administrators, faculty and staff of both colleges for their outstanding support and encouragement. This is definitely a special place that encourages and fosters participation and volunteerism. I look forward to contributing to both the institution and the community in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. College presidents’ reports, Irvine Valley College. Oh, I’m sorry, chancellor. It’s just the chancellor. All right.
Throughout this year, we’ve had a presentation at each of our board members on the topic of student success, and the colleges have alternated presentations. Tonight, the presentation will be by Saddleback College Learning Resource Center and discussing the tutorial center. And then the last presentation of the year will be on the Student Success Summit that several individuals have talked about. I think that presentation is a joint one that will be handled by Dean Patty Flanagan and Rupa Mather from IVC.
All right. Now, college presidents’ report, Irvine Valley College.
Thank you very much. First off, I would like to congratulate trustee Robinson on your post and the last year and getting to know you better. So wish you the best in your academic endeavors in the future. I would like to also, again, congratulate all the faculty that were congratulated tonight and recognized tonight. Just a couple of little tidbits from IVC is Professor Schenk is one of our new faculty members, and so very promising to have an individual move up so quickly and to be recognized in this manner. Professor Julian, this is her second Teacher of the Year Award, so congratulations to her. And Professor Shun actually allowed me to stumble around her classroom as she attempted to teach me Tai Chi. I think I was her worst student, but I had a lot of fun doing it. On the Student Success Summit, the really important part about that is it is a joint effort between the two colleges, and that collegiality is working just famously in that environment. So we’re going to all be better off as a result. Then, we’re also working on AB 86, and this is the Adult Education Legislation, and this is another collaborative project with Saddleback College, and we very much look forward to working with them to help the adult population and work their way through the system and hopefully into jobs. And then finally, to congratulate Saddleback College on their gala. It was absolutely fantastic. Enjoyed it very much. Congratulations on what you’ve done. And when I win this car, I will be driving President Burnett to lunch. Not for a year, but at least once. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. That was once per month, right? Anyway, good evening, everybody. First, I’d like to also add congratulations and thank you, student trustee David Robinson. You serve students in this district honorably and very well. Thank you. Also, congratulations to all our Professors of the Year. They’re just outstanding, and it just shows you the quality of our faculty in this district is so high. With that said, yes, thank you all so much for the amazing and generous support you’ve given our Saddleback College Foundation. It was the most successful gala we’ve ever had. Also, I should note that, as you may recall, if you were in attendance, we named our Alumnus of the Year, which is Anthony Ferry. You’ll hear more about him over the next year, but we’re very proud to have him, who also happens to be a board member and, of course, an alum from Saddleback College. With that said, I wanted to thank, because we do have some of the people responsible in the room, and thank you Chancellor Portner and others and board members for attending the Student Success Summit. It was enormously successful. I wish that President Rockmore and Chancellor Portner and I could have attended, but as you probably know, we were at a conference out of town, but I’ve heard nothing but great things. So thank you, trustees, for particular for attending. Thank you for the great work that you all did. With that said, I have a few dates of very exciting events coming up. First, as you already heard from trustee Milchaker, is that our Social Entrepreneurship Competition Showcase is actually going to be featured on May 10. It’s 9:30 to 1:00 p.m. at University of California at Irvine, and invite you all to attend. Please RSVP, because we expect a kind of a sold-out crowd. So there is an invitation that went out, and if you haven’t received one, feel free to get my office or the Division of Business Sciences. Also, the Scholarship Award Ceremony is coming up on May 16. Hope to see you all there. That’s always a highlight of the year. And of course, commencement, folks, is coming up on May 23. That’s a month away. Anyway, thank you.
All right. I don’t see anyone from Associated Student Government. They must be studying for those finals. And then we have any board requests for reports?
None.
All right, hearing none. First discussion item then, 4.0, or 4.1, Saddleback College Student Success and Learning Resource Center Tutorial Programs.
It will be 10 minutes.
Hi, my name is Christina Hinkel, and I am a political science part-time faculty here at the college, and this is my cheerleading squad today. There are also faculty members, our director and our dean at the college. And I recently was at probably one of the most boring presentations of my life, and I recognized that at that presentation, I wouldn’t do to you what they did to me. So I will be very, very brief, and if you would like a tour or if you would like further explanation of any of the programs that I’m going to explain to you tonight, please feel free to come by. We’re in LRC 212, and I’d be happy to do that for you. So as I said, my name is Christina Hinkel. Patty Weeks is our director. Professor Marina Amini is co-chair of the English Department. She also works in the tutoring center. We have Dean Patty Flanagan and Kia Shafie, who’s one of our math faculty, and they all worked to make sure that the tutoring center is a success and helps our, help our students in order to make sure that they see their success. So I’m just going to give you a brief overview of tutoring. We have English tutoring, which happens in kind of the front of the tutoring center, and that happens on a drop-in and a 30-minute appointment basis. We then have math and science, and math and science is strictly drop-in. This is because oftentimes, students need help with just one or two problems and can help each other, and as a result, the drop-in system seems to work for us there. Tutoring is vital to student success for a few reasons. It’s part of our strategic plan, 2.1 specifically. It’s also part of the Student Success Initiative and our Basic Skills Initiative. It is approved for both of those initiatives. The other reality about tutoring that I think is probably one of the most powerful is that I’ve been teaching for about six years now, and I’ve seen a dramatic change in our students. Six years ago, when I started teaching, students would arrive at the school, and they weren’t as prepared as we’d like them. And this is still a reality that we see. But the change, the dramatic change that I’ve seen is now, not only are they not prepared, but they also lack the confidence. They know that they don’t have the skills that they need in order to succeed, and that is, you know, like pushing a boulder uphill. It’s almost impossible, because now we have to fight on two fronts. Now we have to help them build their foundational skills, and now we also have to help them build their confidence. Bev Wertz, who is one of our phenomenal history part-time faculty in the audience over there, just shared with me a story that she had a student who came up to her her first week of teaching, and he said, you know, “This is so over my head. I have no idea what you’re talking about. I’m so overwhelmed.” And she said, “You have enough time. Go to the tutoring center, get the help that you need with the tutor there. We have a phenomenal history tutor, and I think you can succeed.” And in fact, not only did he succeed, he received an A in the class and a high B on his midterm. So that just shows you some of the reality of what the tutoring center can produce.
That’s great.
So our current services, in addition to the tutoring that we offer, the drop-in for our math and sciences and the appointment drop-in for our English, we also have supplemental instruction, which is for our math and science department. We have embedded tutoring for our English and social and behavioral science division. And then we also have our PASS program. Our PASS program stands for, and it’s a mouthful, I know, Program Assisting Student Athlete Success. I did not come up with that name, I will say that. We also have our Week of Workshops, which was created by Professor Larry Perez and Patrick Quigley. And then Crunch Time. Crunch Time was actually an initiative that was started by an ASG student here, which I think is just phenomenal. I love it when students get involved and start creating programs. So we like to be data-driven in the center, and these are a few of our numbers that you can see. If you look, TU 300, which is the course that you enroll in, in order to receive tutoring on campus, students with six or more positive attendance hours in TU 300 have a 9% higher success rate than the general population. So if a student spends only six or more hours, six hours in the tutoring center, they have a 9% higher chance of succeeding in their classes, which is pretty phenomenal. Our persistence rates are pretty phenomenal as well. If you look in fall of 2013, students who enrolled in TU 300 and, again, had six or more positive attendance hours were at 93% persistence rates, and the general student population is around 76. So these are important figures, and we hope to keep and maintain these figures. One of the reasons why I think these figures are pretty impressive is that our general tutoring has almost doubled, right? So if you look at the bottom, students enrolled in fall of 2012, we had about 2,200 students. In fall of 2013, we reached out and touched 3,200 students. So those success and those persistence rates are maintaining, even though we’re increasing our population. The same goes for our hours. So our students served in fall of 2012 were about 25,000. This fall, we reached 51,000, which is 106% increase. So we’re seeing a lot of increase, we’re seeing a lot of success, and we’re reaching more students, which is what we want to do. We couldn’t do what we do without the support of the college, and this is completely, completely true. The president’s office, I’ve been in Todd’s office on more than one occasion begging for money for various programs that are going to lose funding very quickly, and he’s always been extremely generous and always stepped to the plate, so I’d like to thank him for that. ASG has also been a phenomenal support, both financially and just in their spirit. They’re the ones that created Crunch Time, and all ASG members are there at Crunch Time, supporting their other students and making sure that they have the best learning environment that they possibly can. When we created the athletic department a year ago, Tony, the dean of the athletic department, jumped on board immediately. He was so excited, probably even more excited than I was, and so the athletic department has really stepped up in very large ways, financially, too. They’ve really financially supported this program. And then we also have faculty. A few years ago, we brought in faculty into the tutoring center under Dean Flanagan and Patty Weeks, and we now have a faculty member on staff in the tutoring center for every hour that we’re open. This has allowed us, I think, to keep our success numbers up and keep our data up the way that it has. So faculty has made great efforts. And then our foundation. Our foundation has also supported these programs financially as well, and we’d like to thank them for that. So supplemental instruction. What is supplemental instruction? Very quickly, it’s basically an embedded tutor program. So in our math and science courses, we reach out to faculty who would like a tutor within their class. Now, the tutor stays in the classroom for up to two hours per week and then goes in for about another eight to nine hours in the tutoring center to help the students. Now, what this does is this offers the tutor the ability to know exactly what the faculty member has covered that week, and it makes it so they’re parallel, so they’re on track, so they know exactly what was covered. Students in SI, in our math and science department, help with comprehension, they help with homework, and they assist with quizzes and exams as well. This semester alone, this program, we’ve served over 600 students, we’ve helped in 35 sections, and 22 faculty are a part of it. So it’s an immense program, and it’s growing, and the dean of the math and science department and Patty Flanagan have been working together hand-in-hand to ensure that this continues to grow. Our embedded tutoring for English, liberal arts, and social and behavioral sciences is essentially the same thing, but because they were created at different times, we called them different names. I apologize for that confusion. We also have tutors that go into our basic skills English classes and English courses, and those peer tutors spend time in class, again, to know exactly where the professor is at, know exactly what they’re doing, and then they spend up to another eight to nine hours in the tutoring center to assist students with foundational writing skills, essay and paper writing, and also exams. The Program Assisting Student Athlete Success, PASS, we began a pilot program of this in spring of 2013. And what we’re trying to do here is on campus, we have a phenomenal, phenomenal athletic department, and we have phenomenal athletes. The unfortunate reality of our athletic population is this. Many of them do phenomenally on the field, and they do phenomenally in the classroom, and they’re at that 3.5, 3.6, 4.0 level, and they don’t need help. They don’t need assistance. But a large population of our athletic students don’t come ready, and they don’t have the skills and the foundation that they need in order to succeed. So on top of the fact that they have to go to practice, excel on the field, they also So on top of the fact that they have to go to practice, excel on the field, they also have to pass their courses and receive higher GPA. So what we wanted to do is make sure that they had the academic support that was necessary in order for them to excel and succeed. So what this program does is this week, we're running it on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 9:00 to 2:00, and it's essentially an open study and tutoring session. Students can drop in and out, they can come in and out with their friends, and it's really turned into an authentic learning community, which is really neat. In fall of 2013, we served over, they averaged around 400 hours a week, and in spring of 2013, I'm sorry, this is supposed to be spring of 2014, I apologize for the error, 300-plus hours a week. We've seen a little bit of a drop, only because football, which makes up such a large part of the athletic department, is not practicing in, in the spring. And so as a result, we've seen a drop in those hours. In fall of 2013, 142 out of 357, which is 40% of our athletes, made the honor roll. This is the highest of any year yet. So we hope to continue this. I want to see an upward trend. This is really a program that I, I hope to see that we continue to grow with. Our Week of Workshops is an in-service for students, and this in-service is prior to the start of the semester. This program was actually created by and brought to the dean by Larry Perez, I'm sure you've heard of him, phenomenal faculty in the math department. And Larry Perez envisioned this, and Patrick Quigley envisioned this, as kind of a get-to-know-the-professor, get-to-know-the-faculty, and figure out what they needed in order for the student to succeed immediately. And so we have this during Flex Week, and what this does is it really prepares the students and allows the students to see the faculty in a more relaxed setting. It also, we also cover anything from test prep, study skills, transfer requirements, and then letting the students become familiar with the campus resources that we have available. So this has really become a popular, popular program, and we already have requests for Week of Workshops this summer. Campus perception on campus. LRC tutoring is alive with intellectual energy and happy exchange of facilitated learning. This was stated by Rachel Langill, who is one of our faculty members, who came by during Crunch Time. Crunch Time, I alluded to a little bit earlier, was actually an idea by one of the ASG members to extend tutoring and extend open library hours for the students during finals week specifically. And she was just amazed, and actually, I was amazed too, because usually during Crunch Time, you know, we're all kind of freaking out, the students are freaking out, we all have like, you know, frowns and furrows on our faces, and walking into the center during Crunch Time, it's a completely different situation. Students are excited, students are ready to learn, and they're helping each other, and they're really creating these learning communities that I imagine that all faculty want, want to see on a daily basis. So I thank you so much for your time. If any of you had questions, I'm happy to pass the mic over, so these fine folks can speak as well.
I don't know if it's, 10 minutes are up yet, but I just want you to know that everything that you heard tonight that's so exciting, it's all new, and it's really because faculty have joined in. For the first time, we've always had excellent tutoring at Saddleback College, but we had, we thought it was great when we got 50,000 tutoring hours in one year. Now we're getting 50,000 tutoring hours in one semester, and the faculty are involved wholeheartedly. I mean, you can look across the center, and you see students studying, and you see faculty everywhere in the center, and the faculty bring with them these new ideas. The WOW Week, the Crunch Time, the, I've been here 28 years, and I am just, for the last two years, have sat amazed, watching the tutoring growing, getting more excited every second, and at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over where it belongs to be, with the faculty. I'm going to retire in July, and I couldn't be more proud or more excited to be leaving at this time, when it's at its pinnacle and still going up. And I thank Kevin O'Connor for his 11 years of leadership as my dean and designing that whole building that, I mean, he was such an integral part, that attracts students from, from everywhere, and faculty, and Gary Luke, who, Gary Luke and I were the only two faculty in there for years and years. So watching the, oh, it's not a rebirth, watching the excitement and the growth and the student excitement and the faculty excitement and faculty mentors, wow. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And Dean Patty Flanagan, thank you.
Do you have a request, request to speak from trustee Jamal?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I'm a big believer in tutoring. Thank you for your enthusiasm. So given the, some of the data that looks positive that you've been getting, is there, are there any constraints to elicit more participation in the tutoring program on behalf of the students? What can, what else can we do?
Money.
Okay.
That's, that's probably our biggest constraint.
To do what, money to do?
To expand the supplemental instruction programs in math and sciences. We have a major problem across the state with basic skills math specifically. If we can expand supplemental instruction in our math and science programs and our basic skills English programs, we know that those are, that program specifically is really engaging in helping the students in a way like we've never seen before. So expanding funding for that specifically would. Online tutoring, that's another program that we, Professor Amini and I were at a conference this weekend, and Essex Community College spent $35,000 on their online tutoring program. We do not desire to spend that much money, but online tutoring is an area of growth that we see that we need support with in the next year. So those two areas.
All right, trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, that, that was very interesting. I've, I've never known Patty Weeks not to be enthusiastic. He's been enthusiastic about the program ever since you've been here, and you've done like a fabulous job, and I'm just devastated that you're retiring, but maybe he'll be back.
He's got such good hands, and I'm going to be a student, he's going to be back as a student.
Yeah, he's done a fabulous job, so, so thank you so much. And, and I know I've been down there, and I've had the tour, and you've showed me how the tutoring is going, and it really is going fabulously. But I was going to ask, do the students have to enroll in TU 300 to get tutoring? That's number one. And number two, do the students have to sign up for the Week of Workshops before they come to it? So you could answer both those questions, okay? Thank you so much.
Yeah, yes and no. The Week of Workshops, the Week of Workshops is so exciting because it's voluntary by the faculty. They're coming in and giving workshops because they want their students to succeed, and the students are coming here before their classes actually start to get a head start, to make sure that they're going to succeed. So it's very exciting.
So what happens if a student needs tutoring? Let's say they suddenly hit a wall. They, they need it, it's like halfway into the semester, and they haven't signed up for the TU 300. Then what do they do?
They come in and, they come in and sign up that day, and they get help that day.
They could sign up at any time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, trustee Padberg.
I'm just so thrilled and excited to hear your excitement about this program, and it's just, it's terrific, and your statistics prove its success, and I just want to tell you, Patty, the history around here is when you retire, you always come back.
So congratulations to all of you. What, what a great, great story. Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
Christina, I just wanted to thank you for a wonderful presentation. You did a marvelous job, so thank you, thank you. The other thing I wanted to say about Patty Weeks, Patty, you're going to be missed. You're, you're, you've been the heart, you've been, you've been the heart and soul of that for so many years, and I just want to congratulate you and thank you, thank you for all that you've done.
It's been my passion and my joy.
I know it has. And Kia, I, I know you, and you're, you're doing well. I'm glad to see that you're involved. He's a, he's a mathematics instructor, and, and then Patty's a good friend, and she's done wonders. I don't know the English professor as well, but.
I'm Amini.
Good, thank you. But thank you all for all this, all that you're doing, and I know 80% of our students who come here suffer from taking a transferable math class and English, or 70% for English, so they need your help.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next we have the consent calendar. Can I get a motion to pass the consent calendar?
So moved.
Got a motion from trustee J., a second from trustee Padberg. Do I have any polls from the consent calendar? Trustee Lang? 5.18. Do I have any others?
I, I have a question about 5.18. It's scratched out in my agenda, and someone wrote 6.11. Is that a mistake? Okay. Okay.
Okay, so it's still 5.18? Okay.
Oh, I see.
Oh, the, the items got flipped. Oh, okay. All right. Hearing no other polls, we'll go ahead and pass the consent calendar minus, or removing 5.18 temporarily. All those in favor say a, oh, I guess we need to do the.
Vote, yeah.
So used to running board meetings. All right, here we go.
Trustee J., Jamal.
Jamal.
Trustee Jamal's out.
No, he's right there.
You want me to vote yes for you?
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, I'll vote yes for you.
Yes.
All right. All right, we have a unanimous yes vote and one student advisory yes vote. All right, now we'll look at 5.18.
I'll just, do you want me to speak to this?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, this is an item that is a grant, I think, it looks like a joint grant with both IBC and Saddleback College for adult, an adult education program. And the only reason I'm pulling this item is, is I did get a call prior to this board meeting from one of the folks that's very involved with the Emeritus Institute. And I know that both Adult Education Now and Emeritus sort of fall within the same area, and I just want to get some assurance, I guess, on the part of the presidents that there isn't, we're, we're not seeing a trend here where adult education is being emphasized at the expense of Emeritus Institute. So perhaps the two of you could speak to that.
Trustee Lang, that, that's an excellent question, and the answer is that they're really two separate cohorts. And so what we're addressing with AB 86 is the adult population, and so these are programs that, I don't know if it dates back to Prop 13, but it goes back a ways where the decision was made between certain school districts and college districts in terms of who would carry that cohort. In our case, I'm not sure for Saddleback, but it was the Irvine Unified School District, for example, that took on that work. And so what you'll find within that are things like GEDs, you'll find populations with disabilities, and some career tech pathways that are in that as well. But those are really quite separate from what we do in the lifelong learning programs. Now, that doesn't mean that Emeritus has its challenge, doesn't have its challenges through that separate process of legislation, and it's, we don't know how that's going to come out yet, but those are very, very separate.
I don't know, I think you did a good job, President Rockmore. Also note also, the other thing has to do with ES, or immigrant status and, and as well, just to let you know, of AB 86, that is. But as, as Dr. Rockmore said, there is really no relation under AB 86 programs with Emeritus Institute. Our Emeritus Institute, as you all know, we are fully committed to, 100%, we will keep it strong, and, and we've positioned it, as you know, even in this last meeting, last board meeting, we made their approvals to reorganize it, to help strengthen it and keep it going strong.
All right. So with that, do I get a motion to Pat? All right, we have a motion for 5.18 from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Padberg. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous yes vote with one student advisory yes vote. All right, next we have general action items, 6.1, Saddleback College Co-Generation and Central Plant Operation.
No changes to the item.
Okay. Do I have a motion for 6.1?
So moved.
I have a motion from trustee Jamal. Second from trustee Padberg. Do I have any requests to speak on the item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next we have 6.2, Saddleback College Photo Radio Television Renovation Project. Do I have a motion?
I say move it.
I have a motion from trustee Padberg.
Second.
Second from trustee Wright. I have a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Yes, a question for Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons. I, it just seemed to me that this project probably should have been included in the library renovation in the first place. I was wondering if you could address that.
Yes, that's a good question. At the time that the scope was developed several years ago, under previous administration, I believe they were looking at cost as the main factor for the scope, and as the LRC project went underway, it became very apparent that there was facilities need in the commarts wing, and that it really should have been included in the scope. But at that time, the project was already bid out, and as you know, we have restrictions with our public contracts code as far as how much additional we can add to a project as far as cost over and above the bid, bid amount. So it was decided at that point in time that the need was very great. The college president and the chancellor were very supportive of having this be a separate project, and it was included through the appropriate college committees as far as being prioritized, and also went through the basic aid cycle, a previous cycle before this, and so got funded, and now you're seeing this before you. So yes, we are certainly looking at things much more holistically now. I think part of that process is because we have that basic aid funding, we have process where we're, planning is driving our budget priorities now, and I think that you won't see this type of thing happening in the future. I think we have very mindful people taking a look at things at, both at the colleges, but also at the Capital Improvement Committee and BARC, which is the basic aid committee.
It's good to hear, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next we have 6.3.
I do want to mention, there is one typo on Board Policy Disabled Students Programs and Services 5140. Under fourth paragraph, the word disable is actually, has to have a D at the end, disabled. And with that change, we're presenting it for review and study. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion for review and study?
For review and study, second.
Motion, motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next we have 6.4, Board Policy Revisions. These were actually on review and study last time, this time for discussion and approval. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from trustee Wright.
Second.
Second.
Second from trustee Padberg. Seeing no requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Congratulations, trustee Robinson, the smoking policy went through. All right. 6.5, Full-Time Faculty Hiring Amendment. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from trustee J.
Second.
Second from trustee Padberg. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote and one student advisory yes vote. We're now to item 6.6, and that's regarding a public hearing, so we will temporarily suspend the, the agenda in lieu of that public hearing. So before we move into the public hearing, we do have Vice Chancellor David Begay will provide an introduction.
The, on this item, the board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the SOC CCD Faculty Association Opening Proposal. There is another item that relates to the public hearing, item 6.7, the district initial proposal to the SOC CCD Faculty Association, to be accepted for review and study for the purpose of negotiations. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process, I'll be here to assist.
Okay, does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing no requests to speak, we will now, the board item 6.6, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Do we have any requests for public comments? Not at this time. Okay. Then the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board of trustees? Hearing none, item 6.6 is now concluded. We will now move to item 6.7, to accept review for, or accept for review and study the district's initial proposal to the Faculty Association for a purpose of negotiations. So entertain a motion.
Move a sentence for.
Second.
A motion from trustee Lang, a second from trustee Padberg. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next we have item 6.8, Academic Personnel Actions.
Move the item.
I have a motion from Trustee Jamal.
Second.
And a second from Trustee Melchiker.
There is an amendment to the item?
Yes, we got the change here.
We'd ask the board to accept that as an addition to the item.
Excuse me, sir.
Maker of the motion?
I move acceptance of the...
You accept the amendment? Okay. Is that okay with the second, Trustee Melchiker?
Yes, yes, sir.
Alright. So the addition is accepted by the maker and the second. I have a request to speak from Trustee Wright.
I just wanted to make mention before we vote on that, that towards the end of this, in Appendix C, there is a payment of retroactive chairs and co-chair stipends. I just wanted to mention of that for both IVC and Saddleback. So it's in the board agenda, and I just wanted to bring that to people's attention.
Alright. With that, seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Next we have item 6.9, Classified Personnel Actions.
Move the item.
I have a motion.
Second.
From Trustee Padberg, second from Trustee Melchiker. Any changes?
Yes, there is one. We had a formatting error on the job description. It looks like it starts at job duty number 30 in Exhibit B, actually starts at job duty number one and goes to 13. So it's a minor formatting, I'd like the board to accept our apologies for that.
Okay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous yes vote with one student advisory yes vote. Next we have 6.10, Dot Resolution Number 1411, Classified Employee Layoff. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Jamal. Any changes or any information there? No requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Trustee Jamal?
All signed.
Unanimous yes vote with one student advisory yes. Next we have 6.11, Saddleback College Return to Basic Aid Project Funding for the Learning Resource Center renovation. Motion from Trustee Lang, a second from Trustee Wright. No more information, no requests to speak, we will go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Next we have Reports. And with that, we have Report 7.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Professors of the Year. We essentially did that already, right? So then now we're at 7.2. We do have a short, or I should say brief PowerPoint presentation from Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Do we move to accept the report?
Do we need a motion?
I don't know.
No, we don't need a motion, Trustee Jay. Thank you anyway.
Thank you. The board requested information on the Retirement Board of Authorities' investment policy structure and processes used to manage the retiree medical benefit, which we call the OPEB trust, to ensure that we have fiscal stewardship. And we believe that due to a lot of public attention and media coverage of a situation that happened at the UC system, we wanted to make sure that our structure and our trust fund cannot endure what happened at the UC system. So with that, we just want to give you a couple slides and make you understand what the structure is. So there's a lot of different entities that involve, are involved in different roles and responsibilities within the OPEB trust. There's the Board of Trustees, there's Keenan Financial Services, the Benefit Trust Company, Morgan Stanley, and of course, the Retirement Board of Authority. The Retirement Board of Authority, which we call the RBOA, was authorized by yourselves in 2008 when we set the OPEB trust up. And that board provides ongoing governments of the OPEB trust, and that trust is irrevocable. It meets quarterly and it's brown acted. It approves the investment policy statement, it reviews portfolio performances and disbursements, actuary reports, and makes sure that an annual audit is done, an annual audit, but it's also done by their external auditors. It manages administrators' compliance milestones and substantive plan, which Kim McCord will get into that in a minute. And the trust is a non-directed trust, which means there's significant liability that's reduced by having a non-directed trust, and each entity is responsible for working independently. With that, we'll have Kim McCord do the next couple slides.
Good evening. So we did an RFP process to select our plan for our trust, and we did this back in 2008. And we selected the program with Keenan Financial Services called the Futuris Plan. So that encompasses the overall coordination of our plan. They also helped us establish our trust with the banking system. And this is accordance with the IRS guidelines. There's a special code in the IRS, a 115 trust that this qualifies for that keeps us in line, and qualifies with all the GASB requirements as well. They also recommended a qualified trustee custodian, which is Benefit Trust Company, so it should be BTC. And they maintain our substantive plan, all the documents every time the RBOA meets, anytime we update our retiree benefit plans, all those details are kept in that substantive plan, and they keep all those documents current for us. And then they provide administrative support. So they do our meeting minutes and agendas and coordinate all of those events. And then Benefit Trust Company is our discretionary trustee, so they are the custodian of all of our trust funds. They provide safekeeping of all the securities in our portfolio. They do prevent, sorry, appoint the investment advisor, which is Morgan Stanley. They approve all the portfolio recommendations that have to comply with our investment policy statement. And they maintain accurate records of all of our financial transactions every time we buy and sell securities or have dividends or pay fees. And they provide our monthly and annual reports to the RBOA, and they also provide documentation for our meetings, where you see those monthly OPEB trust reports. And the next slide is about Morgan Stanley. We have Carrie Allison here from Morgan Stanley to report on them.
Carrie Allison, Morgan Stanley. What we do is, we were hired through a nationwide RFP process by Benefit Trust Company. So we are the investment advisor to Benefit Trust Company for your OPEB trust. We work in a few different areas. We work with you and our other clients in Benefit Trust to do risk tolerance analysis for the board, we recommend, to make sure the board is taking the appropriate amount of risk. Secondly, we recommend asset allocations based on the investment policy statement. We screen and recommend all the different investment choices. There are probably over 20,000 different investment managers out there. We do our due diligence to screen that down to who we believe are the best of the best. And then we provide ongoing due diligence to the RBOA and to Benefit Trust Company if any changes need to be made on the asset mixes or the managers, and that includes performance reporting and other educational areas.
So the RBOA has an investment policy statement, which is included in your packet under Exhibit A. And the investment policy statement sets the investment objectives in accordance with the California Government Code that we have to follow. It restricts how much equity and fixed income investments we can do, and it sets a target rate of a return of 7%. Our risk tolerance is balanced between risk attitude and our risk capacity. And there's a survey that the RBOA members do to make sure there is balance between being very conservative is part of getting a return objective with the least amount of risk. We do not follow the practices that got the UC system into trouble, and the structure and the policy ensures that, is part of what we do. I'm going to ask Carrie to come back and talk about the investment returns and also talk a little bit about how the structure in place is going to prevent what happened at UC system.
And it might be helpful to actually explain what happened at the UC system as well. Effectively, in a nutshell, you hear the term derivatives. Derivatives are such a broad word. It's almost like using the word food, and there's lots of different types of food. There are good derivatives and bad derivatives. There are derivatives that reduce risk, there are derivatives that increase risk. Specifically in that article that was shared with me that you all saw, that was an issue where University of California had issued some tax-free municipal bonds. And you can, when you're issuing bonds, and this is a different side of the business that I work on, I'm on the wealth management side, but on the investment banking side, when you issue bonds, you can issue it as fixed-rate debt or variable debt, similar to your home mortgage. And oftentimes what happens is, depending on which one you issue and what is happening on the other side, say you issue fixed, but then it happens that variable rate is cheaper, you can go do an interest rate swap, which means, let's say you're in fixed-rate debt, and, but then short-term rates are really low, or variable rates are really low, you can actually go into the credit markets and do a swap. So you effectively swap out of your exposure to fixed-rate debt for that shorter-term exposure. And you do these things based on your outlook for interest rates. Well, they got into a little trouble because as far as it is right now, their interest rate swaps were underwater. Now, according to that article, CFO still thinks that interest rates are going to rise and that those swaps will be fine over time. You have nothing like that in your portfolio, nothing like that. In fact, what's so nice about your path is you have a discretionary trustee, Benefit Trust Company, who takes the input from your board, and we have lots of very detailed discussions about your needs, your timeframe, your cash flow, attitudes of risk, capacity for risk. We take that all into account, and then they take discretion based on the guidance that the RBOA gives them as far as how the portfolio should be aligned. They're completely diversified. In fact, we use 22 different mutual funds in the process, and we regularly do reports to make sure they're fully diversified. So you have nothing like that in your portfolio. As far as the performance, you've got a little over 92 million as of March 31st, and you see the performance there on the line where it says account. Over the last year, it's been up 8.47% for the 12-month period ending March 31st. We've averaged 6.6% per year each of the last three years, and 12.93% per year each of the five years. I don't know if you remember, five years ago, I certainly do, March 31st of '09, the market bottomed early March of '09. The S&amp;P actually hit 666 on March 6th of '09, and now we're over 1,850. So that's why those numbers look so good for the five-year. But since we started, we're averaging 6.39% per year. It's a very diversified portfolio, almost exactly 50% bonds, 50% stocks.
Okay. And with that, we wanted to know if you had any further questions regarding this board request for information.
Trustee Lang, whose request for report?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate all of you coming and talking to us more about how this functions. Obviously, we're talking about a very significant amount of money. I think it's important that we be as transparent as possible in terms of how the process is working, and that's really the reason why I had asked for this report originally. A couple of observations, I guess, on my part. One is, we did, we had set a target rate of 7%, and it does appear that we're underperforming relative to that target presently. You're showing 6.39% rate, which, as I understand it, is before considering the Benefit Trust fee of something like .48, I believe it is. But then I'm also curious as to the other fees. I know Morgan Stanley must be charging us an investment advisory fee, and I suspect that the investment managers that you've hired to manage specific parts of the portfolio are also charging those kinds of fees as well, or charging fees as well. So I do want to hear a little bit more about the fee structure situation. And then it just occurs to me that, given that we've got about a 50/50 allocation and the fact that equities have performed pretty well the last couple of years, I would have thought that that would have, I guess even, that we would have seen a higher rate of return than what we've actually experienced. So maybe you can just address those couple of points.
Yeah, two questions. First, on the fees, these returns are net of the fees that go to Benefit Trust Company, Morgan Stanley, and Keenan Financial. Secondly, timing's a big deal in when you start. We started the portfolio in '08, and we know what happened the end of '08 and early '09. Since then, the portfolio's done tremendously well, and we've gained a lot of ground. Obviously, the bonds weren't hit as bad in late '08 and early '09 as the stocks, but still bonds were down quite a bit. We could send you some more analysis on year-by-year performance, but given the rather difficult timing of the inception, the 6.4 per year since inception has grown tremendously over the last five years. The number was negative early on because of the downturn in the market. We believe we've been on pace, well above the 7% mark, and we're rather optimistic going forward. One thing we try to do is, we try to make sure the portfolio is balanced and that we're investing in those areas that tend to be the least popular, a little more contrarian-oriented, because that's when you tend to get a little better balance in the portfolio. And I'll give you a perfect example, and I'll give an example of why your structure of your trust works so well. The crisis in '08 happened in early '09. Most endowments, foundations, pension boards, when they met in early '09, effectively what they needed to address was the fact that their portfolios were out of balance. Let's say you had a 50/50 portfolio, and then the market went down in late '08, early '09, you no longer had a 50/50 portfolio. You had a lot more in fixed income than you did in equities, because the equities were down more and the fixed income was up more. What we were able to do because of the structure and the client, with Benefit Trust being discretionary trustee, they have discretion to rebalance your portfolio. Didn't have to call a special board meeting. Of course, we met on a quarterly basis, and we continue to do that. But Benefit Trust Company was able to take advantage of that downturn in the market to rebalance the portfolio without having to call a special meeting, which is pretty unique. There's not a lot of discretionary trustees out there. That was able to make up, excuse me, a lot of the ground from the downturn in late '08, early '09. But we're pretty confident that, given the pace we've been going the last five years, that that trend to and above the 7% is going to work.
If I may?
Yeah.
You sort of skirted the fee issue a little bit by just indicating that it was included in the rate of return. So I am still interested in hearing what the different, how the fee structure is set up.
Sure. The combined Benefit Trust Company, Morgan Stanley and Keenan fee structure is under 40 basis points. I believe it's about 35 basis points total, and that's to run the whole program and do all the documentation. Underneath that, I mentioned that we can virtually use any investments, we can use ETFs, we can use, we can use any open-ended funds. Because of the size of the program, we use the very least expensive institutional share class of funds that are typically only available with about $5 million. So you're right, there are internal expenses from those. Those vary from fixed-income funds that are more in the 30 to 50 basis point range to the equity funds that can range from the 50 to maybe 100 basis point range, depending off if it's a niche such as emerging markets or maybe some real estate investment trusts. And I can give you all those exact numbers. It's in all our documentation on a quarterly and a monthly basis.
Okay, yeah, I would be curious to see that information.
You bet.
Alright. Seeing no other requests to speak, thank you very much. Next we have 7.3, Staff Refunds to Public Comments. Any questions on that? I did just want to point out, thank you so much for getting the opportunity to do this. The intent of this segment is that when people make public comments, we'd like to know that they're not just being brushed off, that the public would like to know that they are heard and that there is action many times, and this was a great opportunity to show how that worked. And hopefully, it inspires people to want to make public comments, know they're not being ignored. So thank you. Alright, item 7.4. Any questions on the list of speakers? Seeing none, item 7.5, Basic Aid Report. No requests to speak on that. Item 7.6, Facilities Plan Status Report. A request from Trustee Wright. A request from trustee Wright.
Just a quick question. One is, I noticed that, I read in the Lariat in the first part of April, I think it was April the 6th, where the construction to be delayed for the science, for the new sciences building. Is that going to happen? Because they had to move some underground utilities that they discovered. And how's that going?
Oh, I understand the question. I was shaking my head no, but yes, there was a delay. It was 60 days during underground work. We anticipated as much. The building itself is planted right next to the central plant, and all of the things that come out of that plant are underground. Most of them we knew about and addressed, but there were some that we didn't know about, and it caused some delay. As well, there was an AT&amp;T line, which we have no control over, other than it's an easement. And so they needed to come in and move that, and that took some extra time. We're working very hard to capture back some of those days. It will not impact the occupancy of the building, however, because they're with the understanding that it was close to the central plant. We had some what's called float in the schedule.
Okay. And then one additional question. I was noticing that, again, on the task building, we took $8 million, $8.5 million to do the sciences building. When are we going to bring back that $8.5 million to the task building?
Deborah, I think that's in this, is it this time around, for the basic aid allocation resource committee, we made a recommendation to that committee so that it would come back, I think it's next month or the following month, you'll see that.
Yes.
Because I want to make sure that.
The basic aid recommendations will be coming to the board in May, and I believe that's included, but it's still going through the final, final stages of the process.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That will move on to 7.7. Monthly financial status report. All right, 7.8, quarterly financial status report. In case the monthly wasn't enough for you. All right, 7.9, retiree trust fund. I think we've got a pretty good presentation on that already. So moving on to 8.0, the reports from administration, Saddleback College Academic Senate.
That's me, Dan Walsh, Saddleback College Academic Senate President. We just had our completion of our academic senate election for our leadership, and I'm happy to report in a landslide victory, running unopposed. I will be back as senate president next year. Our president-elect will be Blake Stevens, vice presidents Kim DRC and Charlie Myers, and secretary Ken Brady. Congratulations to all the faculty who were honored tonight. It was, it's one of my favorite things to see is that. But I also appreciate the fact that the trustees had comments recognizing the other faculties and the efforts that we did. So it's been a collaborative effort on everybody to be as successful as we are. And as I've said before, we're amazing faculty.
I have a short report. Earlier this month, several Saddleback and Irvine Valley faculty members attended the Community College Association Spring Conference in Manhattan Beach. And at that conference, we have an award ceremony called the WHO Awards, WHO stands for We Honor Hours. And this year, our local recipient was my colleague sitting to my right here, Dr. Katherine Schmider. She received the award for her 14 years of service to faculty at Irvine Valley College as the Association Grievance Chair. And also, we had two Saddleback College faculty members who gave a presentation on serving student veterans, Loma Hopkins and Colin Williams. That presentation was very, very well-received. And finally, on Friday, May 2nd, we will be conducting a workshop for our part-time faculty members on applying for unemployment benefits, and that will be held at the Saddleback Valley Educators Office in Laguna Hills.
Just to note, my stepbrother got one of those awards at the same ceremony, Paul Swatzel.
Yes, he did.
All right. Congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you. Lan Tam, no, wait a minute, Kathy Schmider?
Yes. For real this time.
For real this time. Reporting for the academic senate at IVC, the, we have had our election in, at IVC, we elect only our president and our vice president in college-wide, in faculty-wide elections. The other officers are appointed by the representative council, and we haven't done that yet. But Bob Burell and I ran unopposed, and somehow or other, were actually elected. So he'll, will be continuing as president and vice president for another year. Thank you. I have every expectation that Diana Hurlbut, who you've now met, will be continuing as curriculum chair. And Rupa Mather, who you'll be seeing next week, next meeting, presenting about the Student Success Summit, is going to be moving on to other responsibilities. She's not leaving service, she's just moving to a different area of service, we expect. So we'll be getting a new member of our cabinet, two new members of our cabinet, actually, but we're not sure exactly who they will be yet. The Student Success Summit, of course, was held at IVC, and we were very pleased to see how many people showed up, and especially how many people came up from Saddleback. It looked as though some of them hadn't been up to IVC before, or at least not very much, and so it was really a pleasure to see them. And I agree with the comments that have been made through the evening, it was really a wonderful collaborative affair, lots of workshops, lots of activity, lots of good conversation, and I think some colleague relationships were forged or, and strengthened during that day. I think it'll continue to be a very useful exercise for all of us. Thank you.
Very good. Associate Vice Chancellor of Economic Development, Randy Peels.
Good evening. Thank you. So I'd like to report that renewed planning activities for the Advanced Technology and Education Park at the site in Tustin are now in progress. Due to the new and improved configuration as part of the land exchanges with the city, the county, and the Navy last year, ATEP site planning needed to be significantly updated and revised. An ATEP development master plan is now being crafted by district services and campus representatives under the direction of HMC Architects and the Planning Center. The development master plan process is distinctive from education and facilities master planning, as well as different from individual building planning and program design. It's a higher-level site plan that will support these more detailed planning efforts in the future. The ATEP Development Master Plan Steering Committee has launched their efforts with initial meetings with district services and college representatives, also with the colleges, the chancellor's executive team, and also with the ATEP planning group that includes our ATEP site development consultants. These ATEP Development Master Plan meetings will continue through this semester, some of them during the summer, and through the fall. A presentation is also planned here with the board trustees in the fall. Also, I wanted to report that last week, I represented our district and colleges as the new board member of the Orange County Web, the Orange County Workforce Investment Board. This is a two-year term that I'll be serving on representing our district, and I look forward to representing all of our institutions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, Robert Bumici.
SOC just announced its outstanding Classified Employee of the Year. We'd like to congratulate Sandy Pope from District IT, and hopefully, the board will get to meet her next month.
Great. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, David Begay.
We have a couple of job fairs that HR is going to be attending. One is May 21st at Bremen University, where we'll have a table set up and a couple of presenters. Myself will be presenting with Jim, not Jim Wright, later on. No. Our consultant, we used the higher chancellor, Warner.
Wasn't here.
That guy. Anyway, Jim Walker, yes. Anyway, so we didn't, and also, on July 9th, will be at Camp Pendleton. Congratulations, David Robinson, you did a fine job as a student trustee. You listened, you engaged. And then Kathy, WHO Awards, pretty prestigious. It's kind of cool that Kathy got it, and she deserved it.
Yes, it is. Yes. All right. At least they don't sing the song anymore. That's.
I didn't warn you about a song.
All right. Vice Chancellor of Business Services, Deborah Fitz.
I just wanted to refer you to the report in the packet for the HR Financial System Software Implementation Project, and we'll be reporting every couple of months, giving you a status of what's going on in the project. There's a lot of details in there. I don't know if it's at the appropriate level, so I'd appreciate your feedback, and whether it's enough or too much, and that kind of thing. But moving forward with good progress so far in the first few months of the project. Thank you.
Great. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Vincent Cooper.
Good evening, sir. Vincent Cooper, IVC Classified Senate. On behalf of all the IVC classified staff, thank you to the board and to the chancellor for this wonderful resolution, and greatly appreciate that. Second, May is a busy month, but one of my favorite things to do is the 11th Annual Jazz Picnic on Saturday, May 3rd. That's always a good one to do. And special thanks to our fundraising committee at the Classified Senate. This year, for the scholarship ceremony, we will be handing out five, $500 scholarships to students, one to a veteran, and another one designated to someone with a green technology major, and the other three are open. So special thanks to Mary Rominger and the fundraising committee. Thank you.
That's John. California Schools Employees Association, Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. We wanted to thank the Board of Trustees for the resolution for recognizing Classified School Employees Week. We have a lot of activities planned. We're in preparations of that now, and we look forward to being able to show our classified staff, all the hard work that they do is appreciated. We also wanted to wish student trustee Robinson the very best in his educational endeavors in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate, Mike Sauter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you again for the award, the resolution. It's nice to be recognized, and I'll bring that to our classified staff on Wednesday during our general meeting. Just a couple of items I want to highlight. Our elections are coming up next month. We'll be electing executive positions, the secretary, treasurer, and our member-at-large positions. I will be staying on for the second year of my term, so you'll see me again next year. I'll be glad to be here. Also, to highlight the Student Success Summit last Friday, it was a great event. I was very happy to be involved with it, and I definitely encourage the colleges to continue with that effort. I think it is a great way to share what we do on a daily basis and allow for that discussion and innovative ideas to just be passed around and allow others to explore those ideas in their education, and especially in the classrooms. Finally, commencement is coming up next month. Staff is definitely involved in the commencement. It's a great event, and classified staff will once again be the, our main fundraising for the entire year is our commencement flower sale for graduation. We will be raising money for scholarships again as well, and our hope is to raise enough funds to establish more student scholarships, and also to continue our scholarship for one of our classified staff members. Who, the executive committee convened last week, and we did select an award recipient for our scholarship. Unfortunately, I'm not privileged to release that information yet, but I will, I promise, next month. We're very proud of our winner, and he or she is off to do some really good things with their education. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right. With that, I guess we are ready to adjourn. All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you.